Now, this regular workshop meeting to work. Council, you have a proposed agenda for tonight. There's a couple of little changes I want to point out to you. First off, there's staff has asked to remove number four.
Richard, did you have some comments about that?
Yes, over the last several weeks, the mayor, let me start that again. Mayor, you look very handsome tonight. You're on my mind.
April Fool's. Oh, wait a minute, it's too late, too late.
Just remember, that comment did not come from the staff. Over the last several weeks, the Director of Transportation, his staff have been working with the city attorney relative to the new contract with First Transit. However, in the last several days, it's come to our attention that because the FTA provides funds for this transit system, that there are union implications. While we know that the state of North Carolina is a non-union state, there are certain implications where you receive federal money. Now, this exposure for unionization is no different under this proposed contract than under the contracts we've had with the former or current provider. However, Mr. Carter and I have been talking. He has been getting legal counsel. We're going to be working on some specific wording that we want to put in the contract. Therefore, we're not ready tonight to recommend that contract to you. Mr. Carter, do you want them to just withdraw it to a future day, or?
Yes, sir. So I intend to have it back on for your April 16th meeting, or as an on consent item, so we can go into this more depth with you that time.
Thank you.
And also, in regards to adopting the agenda, we have an addition to the agenda, to the consent agenda. This memorandum of understanding for involuntary committal transportation. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with those modifications.
Move approval with the changes requested.
Second.
Motion, and second, is there any discussion on those? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have some minutes, and we have these consent items, and we have minutes from the March 19, 2019, regular workshop meeting, and the March 19, 2019, regular meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we go to our number six on the workshop topics for tonight, and this is the FY '20 budget issues and solutions. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Richard.
Good evening. Appreciate you all joining us. This is going to be the first of a series of meetings that we'll have over the next several months to adopt the budget for next year. Our goal is, if at all possible, to have it ready for you to adopt in late May or early June, which is our normal practice. Tonight, we'd like to talk with you about issues, solutions, and more. The issues are some that you have been advised through the email chain over the last several weeks, but for the public, we'd like to go ahead and list some of the issues that we're facing as we put together the draft budget. We all know that hurricane damage occurred. We were just talking a moment ago to one of the council members about the fact he is still not in his house, but hopefully will be very shortly. The hurricane damage results in a loss to the tax base, which results in revenue loss, and we'll discuss that in more detail. A second issue is that in FY '19, when the county adopted their budget, they increased their property tax to assist the school board. There are some unintended consequences because the sales tax is distributed based upon a formula that actually rewards increases in tax levy. Also, we're going to discuss sales tax history, and then we're going to discuss the 800 megahertz funding, the recent North Carolina Retirement Board decision that's going to mandate that we increase our contributions, and then, of course, our health care, our health plan funding. Looking at issue number one, several weeks ago, Harry Smith provided information, and you're going to see through these slides that it continues to be updated, which is good news. The first news that we received was that they were estimating, the county was estimating a loss of about $110 million on the tax base. You can see the FY '19 tax base was about $3.7 billion. You can see that the estimate several weeks ago was roughly 3.6, a loss of 110 million. If that loss was, in fact, the full loss, we would lose revenue that is generated, obviously, from property tax. The higher the tax base, the more revenue we get. The lower the tax base, the less revenue we get. The initial projection, which we provided you, was that we would lose about $471,000. That's the equivalent of 1.3 cents of property tax revenue. About two weeks ago, Mr. Smith contacted us and said that a number of these properties were coming back online, and therefore, the estimate of loss was only 80,000. So we went from 110...
Eighty million.
Thank you, sir. You can continue to play for Pittsburgh, who's coming here. But 80 million instead of 110. Well, if that's the case, instead of losing over 400,000, we would lose about 281,000. So you can see that the equivalent dropped from 1.3 cents down to 1, to 0.79 cents of tax. Earlier this week, the mayor was talking to Jack Bright, the chairman of the County Commission. We called Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith is now projecting that the loss will be 55 million, not 110, and not 80. All of these are trends in the right direction. What we can tell you is that if that is the projected number, that instead of losing 471,000, you would lose 122,000. So the number keeps coming down. That's important. Now, whether we base our budget on the 80 million or the 55 million, those are decisions that we'll need to make. What we know is that the good news is that it won't be 110 million. So the challenge off of tax base loss due to Hurricane Florence has been reduced. It's still a degree of challenge. Let's talk about the county property tax increase and the city sales tax loss. In 2018, the county raised their property taxes. The school board needed more money. The county commission felt it appropriate. The county commission did what they legally are empowered to do. They raised the property tax. The distribution method for sales tax is directly connected to property tax. If you raise your property tax, you actually get rewarded, because remember, the property tax distribution can either be on an ad valorem basis, which is tax. It can be on a per capita basis, which is population, or it can be on a combined method, what we commonly refer to as blended method. Currently, the county is using the ad valorem basis. And since they do use the ad valorem basis, when they raise their taxes, they receive more money. It'd be no different than if the city chose last year to raise our taxes. We would have had a benefit, or at least we would have cushioned the negative impact from some other government raising their taxes. Neither method, if you use the combined method, it says that neither the ad valorem or the per capita can be used to distribute less than 40%. And again, they're currently using ad valorem. When the county raised their property tax 3 cents, there was an unintended consequence. I truly believe that the county commission did not realize that it was going to have an impact a year away on the city of Jacksonville. But it does. What it shows is that we're going to lose sales tax. There was a $458,000 gain of sales tax to the county and a $445,000 loss in sales tax to Jacksonville. Why are those two numbers not the same? As Gail has explained to me, the 458,000 impacts all money that is gained from all other municipalities, while 445 is actually what came from the city. So from others, I'm not sure which others, whether it's North Toppsil, or Richlands, or Swansburg, or a combination, the county did gain. And again, I don't believe that the county commission ever intentionally or realized that there would be this unintended consequences. But again, if you raise your taxes, and it's all based upon ad valorem, there is a ripple That loss to us is the equivalent of $1, I'm sorry, 1.25 cents on the tax rate. When you look at the tax distribution, in FY '19, we received $11.9 million. In FY '20, we're projecting 11.7, almost 11.8, and without the $450,000 loss, we would have had $12.2 million. So again, we believe that we're going to have a $450,000 negative. We do know that the first quarter after the storm, we have had tremendous sales that have increased the sales tax. What I would say to you, though, is that I'm not convinced, nor is Gail, that we are going to see that substantial increase in sales tax continue quarter after quarter after quarter. You know, it's logical that the first three months after Hurricane Florence left us, that a lot of people bought generators, they bought shingles, they bought, they bought, they bought. But once you've purchased that, that trend does not continue, at least not on the same pace. In recent discussions, the county has said that they think that the number that the city will lose is actually $315,000, not 450. Well, either way, the word "loss" still applies. The mayor and I were talking about this, and I gave a pretty simple example, because, as you know, I'm a pretty simple guy. I like number-one football teams, and I love the New York Yankees. That's pretty simple stuff. Think of it this way: if you walk into a room and you have $20, you have $20 in your pocket, and it's made up of four $5 bills, and somehow you lose one of those $5 bills, but Mr. Thomas comes along and says, "By the way, I owe you $8. Here's $8." Well, technically, you're walking out of the room now with more money than you had, because you're walking out with $23. But you're not walking out with the $28 you would have had if you hadn't lost the $5. So whether you use the city's number of 450, or you use the county's number of 315, we're still losing money. And why are we losing money? Because of the distribution formula. Issue three is what I'm calling little education regarding the sales tax history. These numbers are not city numbers. These numbers come off the official records from the state on tax distribution. And I have to admit, when I saw these numbers, I said, "There's no way this could be accurate." But it is. In 2007, the county received $13.7 million in sales tax, and the city received 13 million. 12 years, 11 years later, the county is receiving 38 million, and we're receiving 12 million. You think of all the growth that has happened in this county, and to realize that through the distribution formula, the county is now getting $7.6 million more than they did 12 years ago, and the city is getting 3/4 of a million less, is just one of those things you shake your head and say, you know, really? I mean, that's my only comment, is really? And those are real numbers. Let's talk about the...
Now, Jerry may can help me with this, and maybe Gail, too. But wasn't 2007 when we had the, for lack of a better word, the remuneration to the county? Wasn't there an agreement that was foiled in 2007?
That's when the change took place.
The change took place, too, because we had... Jerry, wasn't it true that the city was transferring to the county?
Yeah, yeah, something $2 million, I believe.
In 2007, the blended method was in place, and that was the last year that that was used, because then it was determined that that wasn't valid. We didn't have the authority. So the following year, 2008, you saw a big drop in our, in our sales tax.
So, I mean, looking at '07 realistically, you had 13 million of sales tax, but you were giving back 2 million.
Okay.
Right?
That was the, through the blended method, yeah.
It wasn't a blend. It was an agreement between the two entities.
There was a check written back year after year, so the number would have been actually higher, is what Randy's saying. It would have been...
No, you're, that's inflated. The 2007 is inflated because it doesn't represent the kickback.
Yeah, the kickback.
It wasn't just the county, too, it was the other municipalities.
Oh, it was, oh, okay. But we will, we will get you more information on that.
I just wanted to make sure I remember that. Which basically would be the loss would be more to us, had the correct numbers be posted. It wouldn't be less, it would be more.
If '07 was really, is really 11.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, instead of 13, it would be 11, because that's your net.
We'll verify those numbers. We'll verify those numbers.
By the way, while we're quibbling over numbers...
I think what we're seeing is that...
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Bennett?
Go back over your property tax loss. You're talking about the loss in property tax dollars, right?
Correct.
But that also has an impact on sales taxes. We don't show up there yet. Do we have that number as well?
That's correct. It's good, but that's going to affect 2021.
2021?
The end of '20 and then '21. It doesn't go to effect till, like, the last quarter.
Okay.
Good point.
Ron?
Well, I think what, I think what you're getting at is because we gave some sales tax money because of the deal to the county and others, the county's number's a little bit high because we gave them money, and our number is a little bit lower than it would have been.
I don't think it's reflected on that. I think what Randy's saying is that 13 million should actually, if it's, we're talking about net dollars, it should actually be about 11. Should be about 11, causing our loss to be substantially more, and theirs to be higher. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'll work on these numbers.
Because of revenue, they're getting revenue, we're getting...
I mean, I just think we need to look at the whole picture, as it was.
And we certainly have tried to do that.
Right.
We want to be, we want to be fair and accurate. Here is what, when you look at sales tax distribution, in 2007, and again, assuming these numbers are accurate, if they're not accurate, and especially if this number's 11 instead of 13, the percent comes down. But what you can see is that sales tax distribution, 68% went to the county in 2007, 29% went to the city. The balance went to other municipalities. In 2018, 70% goes to the county, 22% goes to the city. But here's the really, to me, here's the really interesting side up. Property tax is a direct relationship with your, your values. Now, the total county property values in 2007 was a little over 11 billion, and it's now grown to almost 13 billion. In the city, we've grown from 2.6 billion to 2.3, 3.3. So we make up about 25% of the tax base. Where does sales tax come from? Doesn't come from residential property. It comes from commercial property. So even though you look back at this and say, "Oh, well, the city only makes up 25% of the property values," the reality is, we make up 70%, and these are not our numbers, these are off the county roads. We make up 70% of the commercial property pay. So, you know, in 2007, we were 64%, 2010, 69%. Today, we're 70%. Go back and compare. Sales tax mostly comes from commercial property. Jacksonville has 70% of the commercial property. We receive 22% of the sales tax. Now, once again, maybe this number is not 100%, but based upon our numbers, while we represent 70% of the value, we get 22% of the sales tax, and by our numbers, we're getting less than we did 10, 12 years ago. Only 30% of the commercial value is outside the city, and the county gets 70%. If you look at it this way, distribution versus value. In 2007, 68% distribution to the county, 37% of the value. Today, 70% of the distribution to the county, 30% of the commercial value. And the reverse, we get 22% of the distribution today, we make up 70%. Now, this is just, you know, this is just the way the law works. And what you have to ask yourself the question is, is that really fair? And of course, my wife tells me that fair is where you buy a ticket and ride a ride. It depends on who you are, what authority you have. But I think you and the public, and I believe even the county commission, are surprised when they see numbers like this, which we believe are true factual numbers. Sales tax mostly comes from the city, from the commercial property, 70%, 22%. Interestingly enough, when it goes away from property, from sales tax to property, remember the total value of the county. We make up 25% of it. So in addition to sales tax, which is generated in the city to help run the county government, the city also produces 1 out of every 4 dollars in property tax. Now certainly, we get services back, and certainly, this is not a state that requires any type of tax equity between cities and counties. Is it fair? Well, if you look at the distribution on a per-person revenue basis, this is what you're currently getting. You can see the beaches versus the city of Jacksonville. We're producing 70% of the tax, and we are the low person on the total poll. Per population, we get $162, while others get those numbers. If you did go back to a per capita basis, everybody would get exactly the same. So if you have 10,000 people, you're going to get $197 a person. If you have 1,000 people, you're going to get $197 a person. Just information. Issue number four...
Can we go back just a minute?
Yes, sir.
You know, this is why I ran for the county commission, because I felt like that Jacksonville was being short-changed on this, and I also didn't think it was equitable for everybody else. We founded this country on, you know, no taxation without representation. Everybody is equal. Everybody's equal under the law. I just think that, that to give North Toppsil Beach and Surf City extra money and short-change the people of Jacksonville is just, just wrong. There's no, there's no rationale, logical rationale for property taxes determining sales tax distribution. Who pays sales tax? Individuals. And if I'm an individual and I'm paying a sales tax, I want to get my municipality or where I reside their fair share of the sales tax distribution. And what we're doing right now is just totally unfair, and I believe that the county commissioners probably believe that it's unfair, if they really think about this issue. I can't believe that a logical person thinks this is a fair system.
Well, and when you're talking about logic, the interesting part about all this is that the state gives the counties based on a per capita basis. The state doesn't choose ad valorem or per capita. They give it based on per capita, which is exactly what you're indicating here. It's, it's the right way to do it. But then, I don't understand where the shift is, where they get to choose how cities get that, and there's no rationale behind that. And this, this is totally...
You know, the law, the law probably needs to be changed to keep certain county commissioners from hijacking the process and, and short-changing municipalities. I'm sure we're not the only municipality that's, that's being treated unfairly on sales tax distribution. You know, I made the comment to somebody, if I'm, if I make $50,000 a year and you make $50,000 a year, but you happen to live in a, in a municipal, and I'm going to use John here. John lives in North Toppsil Beach, and his house is worth twice what mine is worth. Well, his municipality gets back double at, at a minimum, it's not even that much, but at a minimum gets back double the sales tax because he lives in a nicer house. Even though we both make the same amount of money and we're paying, in, in theory, the same amount of sales tax annually, because it's based on, you know, what can I afford at 50,000, I'm, we're both going to be able to afford the same things. And yet, yet he gets, his municipality gets, on the face of it, double because he lives in a nicer house.
But John may be renting his house, because he doesn't even live in a...
Well, you know...
Yeah. He's a part of me.
You know, and I'm sorry, guys, that I didn't get elected to county commission, because I would certainly fought hard to change this thing. That's the only reason why I ran.
Well, I think one of the more regrettable things is so many people did get elected into the county commission...
Based on this.
...when their stance at the time, we were supporting them, because their stance at the time is they would come to that for us. And, I mean, it is inequitable. We, we can admit that. But I guess it's also difficult to take money out of your own pocket and distribute it to someone else. I mean, it's, it's tough all around, but it's really tough here in Jacksonville. And we're getting painted into a corner. If we have to keep continually raising the price of living in Jacksonville, we're going to be stuck even worse than we are, because people aren't going to, they're going to move to the county. And that's what's happening now. When I talked to a contractor who said at the time of the hurricane, he was building 100, he had 100 houses under construction, and I'll give you one guess as a percentage that were in Jacksonville. Only one guess.
Zero.
One, no, one.
One percent.
One out of 100. It's a dilemma. It is a dilemma, and I don't know what we can do from here.
It's a process that causes higher taxation.
Right.
Because as you get put into a corner year after year, and after 12 years, we're losing almost $1 million, and we still need to operate our city at the level of what people are accustomed to. It forces city leaders to make tough decisions, and it causes higher taxation. You know, should we get the, the dollars that the city has earned, you could actually have less taxes.
The law's unfair.
The law is just not right.
The law's unfair.
Not blaming our commissioners across the state, the law is just not right.
Why should a county official determine what Jacksonville or any other municipality gets in sales tax? You know, they have a, an out, you know, just an outlandish impact on our tax situation here. And as Randy said, we're going to be forced to raise taxes because the county commissioners aren't giving us our share. It's just...
Well, we already have.
Yeah, we've done it twice.
We've done it twice, based on that.
Well, I think the only way that's ever going to change is if you get people into legislature to understand...
To make that change, yeah.
You know, this, this choice system they got promotes higher taxes. You know, us to have to raise our taxes to be able to get a share in the sales tax.
Part of the problem is, it's such a complicated an issue that I don't know that the county commissioners have a real good understanding of the, the impact. And as you said, when they raised their property tax, they didn't realize the impact that it had on sales tax.
I think there's a political dilemma there also for Bob, is, is that now that they've been given these municipalities all this money, how do you take it away?
You know, I was told, I was told that they gave North Toppsil Beach a bigger chunk of the sales tax distribution. They went to this thing because they weren't, they weren't giving them their fair share of the, the tourism dollars. You know, that was a deal, that was a deal made back, you know, okay, you know, we're, we the county are taking your tourism dollars, and we're not, in North Toppsil, you're generating the most of them because of your, your beach rentals, and, and so how do I, how do I help you out? Well, I'm going to change the sales tax distribution formula, and I'm going to go to an... And I'm going to go to an add-on law because I know your property taxes are higher, your values are higher than Jacksonville's or, or Richlands or even the unincorporated areas of Onze County. What you don't have on there is the unincorporated areas of Onze County. Uh, to back, go back, back one more slide.
Yeah, I'll follow that. What's their number?
Yeah, the unincorporated area is, is somewhere around Jacksonville's number. At least it was when I did my research when I ran for county commissioner. So, um, you know, here you've got, um, you know, North Topsoil Beach and Surf City that, that getting at the outlandish share per person. I understand it's per person, it's not total dollars, but it's per person. It's just not, of course, all, you know, us sitting around griping and moaning about it ain't changing a thing. I know we're working behind the scenes, but, but it has been frustrating for me.
We will add to this, to this line, the unincorporated area numbers.
For a matter of information, do we know what the prevailing method is statewide counties and cities?
I do not, Gail. Do you? We'll find out.
Be interesting to see what some of the larger counties or populations do.
One thing that I, one thing I would also point out on the, on the whole issue, we know that the county is going to be facing issues again this year because of the school board and the issues that the school is facing regarding damage. I'm certainly not recommending this, so understand where I'm coming from, though. The distribution formula almost puts the city, it doesn't almost, it puts the city in the position that we have to play offense in order to play defense. Now, what does that mean? If we don't raise sales taxes coming year and the county raises sales tax again to help the school board.
Property taxes.
As my granddaughter does, erase that and start all over.
Okay.
So if we don't raise property taxes this year and the county has to raise property taxes again to help the school system, this is just going to be compounded another year after another year after another year. Now, I'm certainly not recommending, I want the public out there to understand, we're going to be showing you a series of options to solve some of our problems. One of those options is certainly raising property tax. Personally, I don't think that's a good option. But on the other hand, you have to realize the consequences. So again, I'm just stating, you can see what the unintended consequences of raising your property tax is. Unless we raise property taxes to match, we wind up losing. Now, any other thoughts on that before we move to 800 megahertz?
We, we beat that dead horse. Go ahead.
I would just like to say, when, I think when the sales distribution was changed, when was that, back in 2011? Was that when it occurred? We almost lost three million?
We went to the meeting.
No, it was while I was here on council.
That's when that went from the blended method that Lionel Midget had gotten.
It was probably, I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess 15, 15 would be my guess.
That's about right.
When we, when we had determined, when we had determined our budget. Yeah.
Probably. It was about two and a half, two and a half million dollars from what my memory was. Yeah.
And some of that money went towards Onze County employees getting their raises, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And if you will also recall, in order to make that up, the city council voted, I believe it was an eight or nine cent property tax increase at that time.
14, it might have been 14.
On 800 megahertz, we have a partnership where we have the 800 megahertz system. The county is very good about maintaining that system and they are covering 100% of the cost of the maintenance. On the other hand, the 800 megahertz system payments, it's a bond issue. It's a debt. So you can see that in 17 and 18, the city was paying our portion of that. It was primarily interest, about 75,000. In 19, the current budget year went up to 100. In 20, it's going to go up to 661 and you can see the other numbers. Now, this is a general fund obligation. Some of the things we're going to talk about tonight can be spread over water and sewer, stormwater, but this is a general fund obligation. So you can see that we're facing, you know, about a 500, $600,000 increase in the payments over the next several years. The good news is that after 23, it goes to zero. And then the county will continue hopefully to pay the maintenance. Issue five is the retirement increase. The North Carolina retirement system is mandated the solvent. A recent actuarial study brought into question whether they were in fact solvent. And the North Carolina Retirement Board, which is independent of the state legislature, they have voted a significant increase over the next four years. What that means to the city is that our current rate of 7.75% employer contribution will go up. Interestingly enough, the employee contribution does not change over the next four years. So the city, this is not a one-time hit. This is a cumulative hit over four years. So in the FY '20 budget, we need to find an additional 372,000. The next year, 372,000 more and so forth. So over the next four years, we're looking at putting in one and a half million dollars more into the retirement system. Now, when it comes to the retirement system, remember it's all city employees. So unlike the 800 megahertz, which the payment has to come out of the general fund, at least with the retirement, we can spread these over our different funds. So again, FY '20, you're looking at 372,000. The general fund, water and sewer, stormwater and other, you can see how it is spread. But for the general fund, you can see that that's the equivalent of .8 cents. And for the general fund by '23, we're looking at over a three cent, needing just to fund the retirement contribution. Issue six, health plan funding.
Can I, can I ask you another question?
Yes, sir.
So, so really, no changes to the retirement other than to increase the cost to the municipalities?
This does not increase the.
No changes, no changes to, to retirement ages, no changes in benefits, no changes. It's strictly on the backs of the taxpayers.
Correct. Correct. No plan change. Nobody's getting a better retirement from it. It's just what is needed to be, to call it like it is, as I see it. They made some bad investment policy decisions. The plan, what, what we've been told is not actuarially sound. And to make it actuarially sound, it's going to take more money.
Is there a plan to make some changes, some structural changes in the, in the retirement system? Do you know?
I do not know. The health plan funding. Over the last five or six years, we have constantly modified our plan to try to address the growing expenses. As you may recall, at one time, we had four plans. We're now down to three. You may also recall that we have changed the co-pays. We've eliminated, we've done this, you know, we, we've done everything, Mr. Warden, to this plan that we don't know has the state done anything to retire. We have tried to manage this plan.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
And I will also state that the decision two years ago to buy a supplemental plan that we call Teladoc has been very successful. It allows our employees to call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, get a real doctor. And that doctor is on call. They can be, get a telephone call from their home at 3 o'clock in the morning or from work at 12 o'clock in the day. And there's no co-pay to the employee. And the city pays a flat rate of, I believe it's like $5.86 a month per employee. But even though we saved over $200,000 a year through the Teladoc, now how do we save that? Well, instead of going to the urgent care, or even worse, going to the emergency room, employees are now directed through this. It has saved us a lot of money. But on the other hand, it only takes a few catastrophic events to drive you to your limits. The estimated budget for the current year is right at 4.8 million. The revenues come from a combination of employee contributions and city contributions. So if you notice, the contributions total 4.6 million and the expense is 4.8 million. Well, it sounds like to me something's upside down. So how do we address that? Well, the revenue versus the expense left a shortfall of 168,000. Over the last seven or eight years, we have had the ability to put into a fund reserve any excess revenue over expenses. When we entered this year, that fund reserve, you can do the simple math, it was about 220,000. Well, because the expenses exceed the revenue, we will spend 168,000 of our reserve. That will leave the health reserve with 53,000. And I'd remind you, this is only through March. So we, we hope things are going to not get too much worse. This is a projection, a full year projection. If our projection shows correctly, we will wind up with very little left in the health reserve. Expenditure projections for next year, if you'll notice this past year, it was 4.8. We're now projecting 4.9.
What percent is that?
It's about a 6% increase.
6%. Is that, is that what we think healthcare costs are going up nationwide?
That's what our consultant believes is reasonable for this area, not necessarily nationwide. Our current revenues are 4.6 million. If you'll notice, just to break even, since we're not going to have a fund balance, we have to have a 6% increase across the board, city and employees. That will give you a break even on what we project. Not necessarily a good idea to plan on break even. So we have studied, what would it take to begin to build a reserve back up? A 5% on top of the 6%. So assume that you're doing 6% to break even. To build a reserve, another 5% would give you 200,000. 7%, 9%. So whatever number on the right, you have to add the number on the left to decide what is the level of insurance premium increase that we should have. Let's look at the impact to the city. If you did go to the 400,000 reserve, that means that you're looking at a premium increase of 6% to go to net zero or balance. And a 9% to begin to build a reserve or a 15% increase. The city contribution to that is 550,000. In a previous memo, I sent to you an estimate of 350. The bad news is I was wrong. The good news would have been I would have been right. The employee and retiree is going to have to also contribute 175,000 more. If you look at the spread of the various funds, because remember, not all employees are in the general fund. To make up that 550,000, you're looking at the general fund contributing over 400,000. So at the end of the meeting this evening, I am going to ask you to give us direction on this specific point. And let me explain to you why. While all of the other items are for you to think about for the future, if we are going to raise premiums, there is a process that we must go through for notifications and changes and those type things. And the sooner we get to that process, the better. Now, if you're not ready this evening, we would certainly ask you to be ready on April the 16th. On the other hand, this is one of those that you, at, at the end of the day, when the expenses exceed the revenue, you don't just stop the program. You have liabilities that you have to, have to address. Let's look at the issue summary. We will use the, the county's numbers rather than some of our, our other numbers. Let's assume that the county is, the number of 80 million is the number. Then you're looking at 281,000. And let's assume the sales tax loss is the city's number of 445, not the county's number of 315. 800 megahertz retirement health plan. Just to the general fund, we're 2 million dollars out. If you use the county's numbers, which that's a choice you can make, you'll notice that the hurricane loss goes from 281 down to 122. The sales tax loss moves from 445 down to 315. The other numbers stay the same. And you move from a $2 million issue to a 1.8 million issue. You can decide which of those numbers you're, you're the most comfortable with. Revenue projections. This is the history of the sales tax. And actually, this answers the question that was asked before. When did the sales tax distribution formula change? You can see that we went from FY '14 at 53.8 cents to FY '15 at 64.2. That's when it happened. Because that entire sales tax, I'm sorry, that entire property tax increase was the result in the change of the distribution formula.
Revaluation?
Mm-hmm, both, both together.
Okay.
Yeah, because you look at the penny levy, that, that higher tax rate got you less money. So rebound.
Rebound as well.
Okay. Revenue projection for the coming year, property tax. You can see our projection is negative. Sales tax, you see our figure is negative again. Now, whether our figures are 100% accurate, which I can tell you they're not, because you never collect every ounce of property tax you thought you were going to get. You never get all the sales tax you thought, or you have a hurricane and it impacts you one way or the other. But we're entering the budget with these revenue projections for the general fund. Let's talk a second about solutions. These are seven solutions that the management team has come up with. Hopefully, you can come up with an eighth, ninth or 10th. I'm not sure that, pardon the bluntness, that praying is going to be one of our options for solution, but we always welcome that. But you can look at property tax increases, fee increases, changes or reduction of services, levy the auto tag, which we talked about in the past, raising residential sanitation fees, use the 4-cent fund, which is basically our capital project fund, and use fund balance. Let's take a minute to look at those. If you balance the budget strictly on property tax, which I'm certainly not recommending, but I'm just showing you the full impact. Your current rate is 64.2. One cent produces about 350,000. It would take six cents if our projections are correct. It would take five cents if the county's projections are correct. But either way, you're talking about a significant property tax increase. Second option begins to what I'm going to call look for nickels. The first one, it gives you, gives you millions. The second one begins to give you some money, but it's not significant. It's not going to solve your problem. Increase the recreation fees. Currently, an increase, currently our before and after-school programs are at $75 for inside and for one and a half times that for outside. So you can see, if we raise that $10 and took it from 75 to 85, camps from 120 to 130, athletics from 35 to 40, you could generate 40,000. Doesn't solve the problem, but, you know, nickels add up to quarters, quarters add up to dollars. Another thing that you could do in the planning area, we do a lot of zoning permits at no cost. Now, what's a zoning permit? Quite often, people, realtors especially, will call us and say, we need for you to verify and send us a letter that is only on such and such piece of property as this, that or the other. We do that as a courtesy. Quite often, banks and others ask us the same type of questions. We do that as a courtesy. Set any fee you want to, $5, $25, $50. You know, if you want to do that, you could pick up another 40,000 based upon how many of those we do a year. And interestingly enough, we do a lot of them. And interestingly enough, we do a lot of those a year. Now, you may say, that's just good customer service, and if it is, you're only talking about $40,000. If you feel the fee should be $25, you know, it's a step in the direction. Just, you know, at this point, as a management team, we're trying to show you every small and every large way to solve the issues. Let's look at another issue, reduction of city operations. We run a skinny operation. On the other hand, we need to look at how we can control some of these costs too. If you freeze two positions, and I'm gonna use that as general, because recognize, we have some people that get paid $30,000 and some people who get paid a lot more. Freezing two positions with benefits, you can pick up $150,000. Cutting staff, travel, and training, we can pick up another 30. These are things, you set what you want us to do. My estimate was 180 to 200,000. You tell us, management, we want you to make that 400,000. We want you to make that 600,000. You tell us what your goal is, and it's our responsibility to see that that goal is met. So, travel and training positions, as with any organization, the number one cost is what? Wages and benefits. On the other hand, there are contributions that we make. Currently, we make $50,000 worth of contributions to nonprofits.
30 or 50?
50.
Oh, I see.
Under this suggestion, you could cut that by 30, and you could leave it to 20. Now, let me explain to you the math. Remember, in addition to the 50,000 that the city contributes to nonprofits, community development contributes 30,000. We looked at the list of people who are getting money this year, and we determined that all but two, all but three of them could actually, are actually getting both general fund and CD. We talked to Lilly, and we could stay within the community development block grant guidelines by shifting this 30,000 over so that CD is now contributing 60,000, not 30,000. So those agencies would not actually be hurt. That would leave you 20,000 in the nonprofit for those agencies that don't qualify for community development block grant funding. On the other hand, what you could say, and I know it's hard politically, to simply say, you know, "It's not government's responsibility to support nonprofits, so we eliminate the full 50,000." Those are political decisions that we want you to be thinking about. There's another one down there, we contribute $30,000 a year to JOED, Economic Development. There's no obligation for you to do it. Many of you see value in that, countywide, there's value in that. But when you're scraping for nickels and dimes and quarters, these are areas that you could cut if you wanted to. Doesn't mean you should, tough political decisions. We've talked in the past about the auto tag law that allows cities to charge a fee without a referendum. Currently, as you know from recent discussions that Anthony and his staff have provided relative to transit, we receive money from the federal government and from the state government, but there's a local match. The state law says that local government can place a $5 charge or fee on the auto tag to help pay for transit service. So what you could do is say, "We're going to activate that next year." And instead of contributing 401,000, or keep the math simple, 400,000 as our part to match from the general fund, because that's where it comes from, you would lower that to 275,000 from the general fund and 125,000 from the auto tag. That would free up 125,000 to go towards your, your other issues. Just a suggestion. I'd also remind you that we talked in the past about our shortfalls on paving, and this same $5 cannot be used for paving. Now, and then, you know, $5 here, $5 there, let's talk about that. You can implement a $5 charge for transit. Or you don't implement that, and you can implement another $5 that goes to any government purpose, which we have talked about for paving. So don't think about the fact that it's either transit or paving. The law does set a maximum though, I believe it's $30 for, that a local government, and several local governments are doing that. In this case, we're not talking about money for paving. We're talking about money that would offset the city's required match from the general fund for transit.
Is this a yearly fee?
Yes. And the nice thing about it is, if you're, if you have multiple cars like my wife and I do, you would pay $5 multiple times and enjoy the fact that you have those multiple cars. But anyway. This is one that we have used in the past, residential garbage fees. Although we call it residential garbage fees, there are a significant number of our small businesses that also are picked up by what we call residential service. Have roughly 11,000 accounts. Currently, the city has a $10 fee. If you'll recall, we moved to $5 when we had some financial issues, we moved to another $5 when we had financial issues. We also have a disposal fee. So currently, on your utility bill, you will see a $15 charge. If you chose to add another $5 to that, you would generate almost $700,000. On the other hand, you could decide, we're gonna go $4, or $3, or $2, or $1. It's just, if you're looking for ways to make up revenue without property tax, then this is a way to do it. On the other hand, let's talk a second about what I'm gonna call the reality of money. $5 a month, times 12 months a year. Mr. Thomas is how much? $60. On the other hand, if you live in a $200,000 house and you raise property taxes one cent or two cents to basically reach the same number, you wouldn't actually be paying $60. You'd be paying, I'm not gonna correct, $24? Anyway, let's just say it's $24. It's not the same. There's a different impact. I know that the philosophy on having these garbage fees has also been, one is paid by the occupant of the house, the other is paid by the owner of the house. Sometimes it's the same person. Sometimes, the owner of the house is renting the house, so the occupant is the one paying. Philosophically, something for y'all to think about, but again, another option. Another option is the four cent capital fund. Remember, years ago, your predecessors set up the four cent fund for capital purchases. That's where we build parks, that's where we build paper buildings, those type things. It generates, you know, about 1.4 million dollars a year. One of the thoughts that, that I had was this. All of your other expenses like medical and retirement, they're not capital. The 800-megahertz system is capital. So one of the options would be to say, "We're not going to use all four cents for the next four years. We're gonna pay the 800-megahertz charge out of this." Now, what that means is that your capital budget stays the same, but some of your capital projects, like your next splash pad, or your next ball field, or your next, or your next, or your next, gets postponed. But this is an eligible way, I believe, under the rules that Gail and, and John and I have reviewed, this is an acceptable way to fund your 800-megahertz charge for the next several years. And that would be to direct $661,000 in the coming year's budget. That does not leave the balance, because we're gonna be getting about 1.4 million. It doesn't leave 800,000 free, because you have debt service. What it's gonna leave you is about 250,000. You can still do things, just one option. I know this has taken a long time, and I'll try to speed up. Option seven is to use the fund balance. We have an unrestricted fund balance that continues to grow, and one of the things you could do is say, "We're going to use the fund balance for some of this." In the current budget FY19, we had budgeted about 2.8 million of fund balance. What you want to do for FY20 is something that can be decided. What I would caution you though is, it's difficult using your savings account for recurring expenses. It's okay to use it every now and then, but there comes a day, just like you saw with the health plan, there comes a day when the savings account is down to a point you can't use it anymore. Summary of options. Property tax, to be determined. Recreation fees, planning fees, reduction of city operations, reduction of contributions, auto tag, residential garbage, use of four cents, and fund balance. If you, part of my job is to recommend things to you. And I love that, because I get to recommend, and then you guys get all, you gals and ladies get all the heat for the final decisions that, that you agreed with me or didn't. Here are the things though I'm ready to recommend to you tonight, not that I'm asking you to act on them tonight, but I think part of my responsibility is to tell you from a management standpoint, what, what I'm comfortable with. And these are the things in bold that I'm comfortable with. And that's the recreation fees, the planning fees, the reduction in city operations, and the use of the four cents. If you did those, whoops, I hit it too fast. If you did those, you would have come up with 992,000 of your roughly 2 million dollar issue. Now, you could say, "Well, we will use fund balance to balance the rest of it." You could say, "We're, we're gonna do the auto tag, we're gonna raise property tax, we're gonna reduce contributions." But what I'm showing you is that, as the manager, it's my responsibility to give you data and to then give you some advice. My advice is that you solve at least half of your problem this way. Now, if you want more of the problem solved by more city employees, or more travel, or more, that's fine. I'm not asking you to say we agree with that exact number. I'm also not asking you to agree with the exact planning fee. What I'm saying is, based upon the data I've given you, you could solve 992,000 of the shortfall. The bad news, as if there's any good news tonight, the bad news is getting into the budget. Department issues total 1.1 million. I can tell you, not all of those are gonna be even recommended to you, but they're not in the base budget. Let's say for discussion purposes that half of those are in the base budget, which some of them are, I think, very valid. You also have discussed a fire pay plan. We've now costed out, to implement it is 223,000, maintenance of 25,000 a year. General employee wages still to be determined. The capital improvement plan still to be determined. Overall, if you add the shortfall, the options have to equivalent, the options we've given you have to match the shortfall. We've shown you the 992,000 of the shortfall, if you agree with the manager's recommendations. But then you look at the pending items, altogether, we're looking for a solution that could range anywhere from 3 to 4 million, or 3 to 3.4 million dollars. Don't let that number scare you, because remember, traditionally, out of the fund balance, we spend about 2 million dollars a year, or we budget, we don't spend, we budget about 2 million dollars a year out of the fund balance. And if you take that 2 million out of the fund balance, and then you implement the things that the manager's recommending, you can see you're pretty close to being whole for the full 3 million dollar issue. All of this is just food for thought. One thing I, I do want to go back to though is the question relative to health premiums. Between now and next meeting, two weeks away, we really need for you to give us direction that would be binding because of the time it takes to implement the premium changes.
Is it possible to get this presentation added to our legislative?
Absolutely, absolutely. We apologize for the fact that, that it's not there already, but it will be added to that. You know, there's, there's a lot to think about here.
We heard anything concerning, or feedback for the mayor's letters that are kinda commissioned?
Not from any other commissioners, but I did meet Mayor Portemelzar, and I did meet with Chairman Bright and Vice Chairman Bennett, what was it, two weeks ago? And I've also had conversations with Chairman Bright on a couple of occasions since that time. But I honestly think he's trying to, trying to, well, he's trying to help us a little bit along as far as the numbers were concerned, but I still have no commitment as far as, you know, what they're gonna be able to do.
Deadline for sales tax formula changes?
Well, it's going April.
This month?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much.
It's the 15th, I think.
The end of April.
The end of April.
The end of April.
End of April.
The end of April. Technically April, we know that.
But he hasn't said anything about the 800-megahertz system contribution or?
My understanding for him, from him, is he doesn't have enough support.
Okay.
You know, the dilemma that, that we're in is one that I can pledge to you that every city employee, every department head sitting around the room, and those that aren't here tonight, we understand it's our responsibility to help solve this. The easiest thing is, as others have said, simply raise taxes, raise taxes, raise taxes. You can't do that. We, we will come to the point where we will price ourselves out. We're fortunate that we have two new subdivisions coming inside the city. But I can say to you again, your future is in commercial development. It is not in residential development. Now, especially, we're gonna have to look very carefully. It won't surprise me at all if the county commission is not facing once again a tax increase or issues with the school board. So as you ponder everything that I have pontificated on tonight, remember, playing defense and playing offense, you know, it, it's gonna have consequences. And I will say to you, I don't believe that there's a council member sitting around this table that wants to raise property taxes. I believe that you're gonna face this same issue though again next year, because I truly believe that the needs of other governments are going to force them to raise their property tax. But I will say to you again, the management team believes we can solve our issues without a property tax increase, but you have to decide what you're comfortable with.
If there is going to be a consensus on freezing positions before I venture to go that route, I'd like to know what kind of positions and numbers and areas and the effect on city services before I'd say yes.
Well, let me, let me, I agree with you 100%. I would not be in favor, nor would I be asking for you to freeze positions. What I would be asking you to do is give me a number that I work towards financially. Because, for example, Kerry needs X number of garbage collectors, Mike needs X number of police officers. So those type positions, no, we're, we're not talking about freezing positions. We would be talking about selectively freezing positions based upon the manager's evaluation of that department's needs. And I'll just give you a good example, and I apologize to Wally, because I haven't talked to him about this. We currently have two.
Hold on, hold on.
You might, you might wanna sit down. Yeah, go ahead.
I've got some good news, now I've got some bad news. And you'll be spending more time with your children. Now, is that good news or bad? Well, you know, we have two engineering positions that are, that are currently vacant. Well, if you're gonna use a major part of your, of your four cent fund to pay off 800-megahertz, you're not gonna be spending a lot of time designing capital projects that are funded by the general fund. So you look at your engineers and you say, "Okay, they're gonna be doing a lot of capital projects, but it's gonna be water and sewer." So the position that primarily is for water and sewer, you fill. The position that's primarily for general fund projects, you don't fill. And by doing that- And by doing that alone, you're going to save $100,000 or so. But Mr. Bittner, to answer your question, I would not be asking for a freeze of positions. What I'd be asking for is a dollar figure that you would give me as a goal, and through selective freezings. But the goal would always be twofold. Meet your goal financially, and not have it impact the level of service to the citizens.
Could you review that insurance options again? You talk about what we're supposed to be thinking about as far as the, is it like four, five, and six, or five, seven, and nine?
Yes, seven, and nine. Let's go back to, Lynn, can you go back to slide?
Yes, sir.
There it is. Okay. Again, you can see the expenditures, you can see the revenue, just to break even, 6%. If you want to build a reserve, 5% gives you, 7%, 9%.
So either 11, 18, or 15.
Yeah, 11, 13, or 15. Yes.
Do you have any idea what the cost per employee would be as far as any kind of increase?
Yes, sir. You know, we have employees, within each deductible plan, we also have everything from employee only to spouses and so forth. So what we'll do is we'll give you, we have a printout that actually shows you how many employees are in each plan, how many employees have selected their coverage, spouse coverage, family coverage, whatever, and we'll get that to you as follow-up. What you will find is that in the family coverage, these types of increases can be pretty significant. Remember, the numbers you're going to see, they're 26 paychecks. So it's not a monthly charge, it is a paycheck charge. Thanks. Thank you.
Dr. Woodruff, at one point in time when the Affordable Health Care Insurance rolled out, wasn't there so much money that we had to contribute back to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we still doing that, or has that absolved?
Gail.
The larger part of it went away. I think there's still a small amount.
Do you know what that amount is?
It's maybe $20 per person.
We'll get that for you.
I can get it, yeah.
The first year, I believe that we had to contribute something like $63,000. It was a lot. Those numbers have gone away, it's now a much smaller number. We'll get that for you.
I was also going to ask you, in terms of revenue generating, how much money does the city bring in, in terms of our pass, for our passport services?
This year, we're bringing in right at $200,000.
Is there a possibility that we might look at increasing that fee, or is that...
That's actually, there's good news, and then there's no. The good news is that the federal government sets the rate that we are allowed to charge. And about, is anybody here who does it? I think about three months ago, they raised it from $25 to $35. So the good news is, we should get more money next year. The bad news is, we don't have any jurisdiction of the grant. But we, I will tell you, the, Mike's operation over at the Center for Public Safety held a Saturday Passport Fair, and what'd you generate, almost $10,000?
More than $10,000, I think it was 10,000, almost close to 11.
They processed 238, was my memory, like 238 applications in one day. You know, we are processing over 4,000 applications, and I remind the council, we did not hire an additional person. That's being absorbed, and we paid those 10 or 11 agents, we paid them a small stipend to do that in addition to the regular work. Dr. Washington, thank you for bringing that up, because it shows the public how we truly look for the three E's that you have established in a lot of, in what we do. If I've worn you out, which I hope I have, could we take a five-minute break?
Let's take a brief recess.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, we're going to go back into session now. Dr. Wood, I'm turning it over to you now for the next topic.
Mayor, while we've had some difficult discussions regarding the budget, I think you're going to be very pleased with the great news that you and the community are going to receive tonight from the chief relative to engineering, the use of force, and how we have reduced that. So it's my pleasure tonight to ask Mike and also the Colonel to give you all the report on how we are reducing use of force in our community. Chief?
Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this because often you all make policy decisions, but you don't really get to see what the end results are. And this was a policy decision that we made several years ago that we would approach the use of force when we had those talks about camera, cameras and body cams. Y'all recall that discussion we had. I think it's important to talk a little bit about the city culture because I think that had some impact as well as reengineering the use of force. The One City Campaign, Civility, and those kinds of things all had a bearing on some of the results that we've seen over the last several years in terms of use of force. And I think, you know, we talked a long time ago about the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing and those pillars. And the approach that we have taken, the approach that we've taken at use of force, mental illness, all those things that contribute to use of force has been in these different pillars, and we'll talk a lot about that in just a few minutes. If you recall, we talked about the previous culture of use of force training. Use of force training, I mean, I'm sure the mayor could talk about it. When he went through it was basically they taught you how to use a firearm, and then several months later, they might talk about use of force, talk about how it's used. And the policies were based on a continuum of force. And in continuum of force, if you do this, I do this; if you do this, I do this. So that was the prevailing, and in a lot of communities, it still is the prevailing way that we teach use of force, that we approach use of force. We were lucky to have the Colonel on staff when we started talking about this because that conventional wisdom that we make split-second decisions and how we're going to use force, we're going to approach force with force is something that we needed to reengineer. So that conventional wisdom about these split-second decisions is not really the most appropriate way that we should approach use of force. And the Colonel and I can talk a little bit about how that is done in the Marine Corps, and we have used that as part of our approach. Because when Marines go in, a lot of times, they go in in force, and then they become peacekeepers, so they have to turn that switch. And to turn that switch, we have to think about a new philosophy. And we did that when we talked about use of force. And that new approach is that when we get to certain situations, we were going to slow that situation down. How we slow that situation down, how we are more likely to de-escalate the situation becomes part of the training. And where the goal of use of force training to resolve the situation used to be, we've changed that. And the reason that we've changed that is we've looked at the sanctity of human life. So the policies, the procedures, and the processes that we're using right now all focus on the sanctity of life, the sanctity of life of the officer, the sanctity of life of the citizens, and the sanctity of life of the offender. You know, so focusing on that has been very effective for us in discussing those things. There's a number of other things that we're going to talk about as we talk about reengineering use of force, but this is the main goal, to preserve the sanctity of life. And that goes into how we do fair and impartial policing, CIT training, de-escalation training, all those things that we've been doing. And you can see, from 2012 to 2018, we've had an 80% drop in use of force incidents. And, I mean, that's unprecedented when you start to look at it. We had 23 use of force incidents this year. In 2012, we had 114. So when you look at the things that we've done, I think that this has been a wise investment on your part when we had that discussion about whether we were going to use body cams or use that money to be more effective in our training, to be more effective in how we approach use of force incidents. We use the ICAT model, and the ICAT model basically is that slowing down of that process, how we collect the information, how the officer assesses that. That coupled with some of the CIT training has been highly effective in officers realizing that they don't need to make that split-second decision in some cases. This required a lot of different types of training. It required a lot of different types of discussions, and it's been very effective. It's been very effective in the training when we use qualifications. It's been highly effective in scenario-based training that we're using, and the discussions that we've had about how we can effectively de-escalate situations. That process of de-escalation requires us to be more totality of the circumstances when we get to the scene, making sure that we're collecting as much information as we can. Our telecommunicators, when they get that information from the 911 caller, relaying that as quickly as they can to the officer so that we know exactly what kinds of resources need to be there so that we can de-escalate these situations. And when we talk about the reasons for ICAT training, I think that we can't talk about that until we talk about the mental health issues that we're dealing with. You know, 50% of all police shootings is somebody that has some type of mental health issue. So if we're going to do that, we have to be better equipped from the police standpoint to address those mental health. And we've done that. You know, out of the 98 patrol officers that we have, 98 of them have been to CIT training. 100% of all the officers in our department have been to mental health first aid. And the idea is that they have a much broader view of how to address mental health emergencies when they come in. And that's part of that ICAT training. It focuses on the mental health piece because whether you're dealing with a domestic violence, whether you're dealing with an assault, whether you're dealing with a host of situations, there is that mental health component. And how we can de-escalate that situation and resolve it peaceably has become the discussion, you know, with the officers, how we do that better, how we do that more effectively. And the ICAT training has been very effective in doing that. And I think this is extremely important because in the last two years, our officers could have used deadly force on people that had knives, and they were able to de-escalate the situation and resolve it peaceably. So in other communities where they might have had to resort to deadly force, in Jacksonville, they were able to de-escalate the situation. And I think that's a testament to the officers themselves and to the training process that These are just some of the questions that we're starting to ask. What exactly is happening? How can we assess that situation in the best? And that's the basis for the training now. So that starts from the 911 call to the time that we get to the scene, and can we slow that situation down? One of the things that we've seen is officers now are taking much more time on their calls. Now, that has some impact when we talk about manpower, but I think the overall goal of being able to reduce those potentially volatile situations, it's well worth it. And so we went from 45 minutes to about 56 minutes per call on an average, and I think a lot of it is asking these types of questions, asking these types of questions to get all the information that we can so that we can resolve it as peaceably as possible. And I think that's been very, very effective. I think the training that we do, we're talking more and more about how adult learning and how we train our officers. And the training in terms of the community policing process, going back to tactics training. You know, if we have good tactics when we're approaching a situation, then we're less likely to need to use force to protect ourselves. So improving the way we do tactical training, and then the scenario-based training. I think it's important that, you know, and I know the mayor could probably talk a little bit about those no shoot, shoot and don't shoot scenarios that we used to have, but we've gone one step further with that scenario-based training. We've talked about how do you de-escalate the situation? So the goal is not to whether to shoot or to resolve the situation, it's to de-escalate it. And I think that training has been very effective. In fact, some of the officers have said, you know, it's been extremely effective for them when they're in the field to de-escalate the situation, to try to resolve it without anybody getting hurt. This is our simulator. This is one of the investments that you made for us. Officers go into that, and the goal is to de-escalate the situation. You know, so if they draw their weapon and fire it, then that may necessarily have a different conversation than it would have 10 years ago. So how can we de-escalate the situation? Why did you feel the need to draw your firearm right away, especially if you're behind cover? So there's a lot of different questions that the instructors are asking now, and I think that's part of this process on how we teach officers to move from using their firearm back to how they de-escalate the situation. And we do that on the range as well. Some of our in-service training that we've been doing as far as the range has been this type of training that instead of pulling your firearm and firing it, pulling your firearm out, but not firing it right away. And that wrote memory about not firing it right away has some value when we talk about how we can de-escalate the situation. Because they may have to pull their firearm, but our goal is for them not to use it. So if they pull their firearm, can they start that de-escalation process? And that's part of that training, part of that process that we're using to try to make sure that we can de-escalate as many situations. Now, there are situations, even in this simulation training, that it's just impossible to de-escalate. Somebody points a gun at you, they have to use their firearm. But our goal is to train them as effectively as possible in that de-escalation process. And we talk about verbal de-escalation. We talk about it because it is the cornerstone of our policy. It's to de-escalate those situations. It's to use verbal skills to de-escalate those situations. And the combination of the training that we're doing with our firearms and our simulator training and the CIT training all focuses on de-escalation. We talk about people with mental challenges, and I think that, to some extent, has been for us a very successful program. You know, engaging, you know, with folks who have that has been, you know, we talked about that. That's eight full-time police officers in a year's period, not to mention some of the substance abuse issues that we're dealing with, the homeless issues that we're dealing with. And I think that the CIT training and the recognition of mental illness has been very effective with these officers. In fact, some of them have brought back different types of programs that we've implemented as far as autism, so that we know people that can identify people that have some types of problems with autism right away, so that we know that we need to try to avoid using force on those folks. And this is just from our, in 2018, we had 236 crisis calls, 91 attempted suicides, and 116 overdoses. So people that are in some type of mental crisis, whether it's an overdose, whether it's attempted suicide, or one of those crisis calls, are all those calls that we would use this process to try to resolve as quickly and as efficiently as possible. But again, we go back to what the main thrust of this program is, and that's the protect the sanctity of life. And I was well pleased when we were talking to some officers during, when I was taking my in-service, and I asked them about it, and the first words out of their mouth is, "We have to preserve sanctity of life." And that's a far change from when I went through it 39 years ago. And, you know, most of those homicides, the shootings between police and mentally ill individuals, you know, we're talking about 50%. So I think it's extremely important that we give these officers the skills. And over the next year or two, we're going to be talking about how we, I told you, we had 98 patrol officers that are trained in CIT. How do we retrain them? How do we give them some in-service training so they don't lose those types of skills? That's going to be a discussion that we're going to have over the next couple of days. Colonel Lewis and I and the team, and I think the mayor's going to come over tomorrow, city manager, we're going to meet with the Veer Institute and the Police Executive Research Forum, and we're going to talk about these kinds of confrontations and how they're resolved. We're also going to talk about how we do our training and what's the most effective way to do our training. So we are real excited about that because we think that that's going to move us to a different level than we are right now. And we talked about the CIT training. And really, that how we get them into services, the use of our crisis counselor, the use of the partnership that we have with the Yonkers Little Ministries for Homeless, I think all of those things are helping us cope with the mental health crisis that we have in our community right now. And I think a lot of it has been the CIT training. A lot of it has been the investment that you've allowed us to do with hiring the crisis counselor and giving us some of the tools we needed to do this effectively. And I think it's been very, very successful for us. The Community College has been more than gracious to help us develop our own CIT program that focuses on the needs of our community, and I think that's been very, very beneficial for us. So we certainly appreciate the Community College's commitment to making our officers And the fair and impartial policing. I think, you know, when we look back at those pillars, one of the things I think is very, very important is that, you know, we have to be as fair as we can with everybody. And I think that fair and impartial policing has been very effective in the officers realizing that, you know, labeling people or, you know, labeling somebody as crazy or something similar to that is not the way that we should be treating people, and that we should be treating all people with respect. And I think that goes a long way when you start to de-escalate those situations, and you start to have situations where, in some communities, where the whole community is against officers, we have a very, very good relationship with our community. And I think the fair and impartial policing, the idea of being as impartial as we can, realizing what biases we have, and trying to get above those biases so that we can provide fair policing to our community has been a real part of that. So when you look at why our use of force has dropped, you know, you think about the culture the community has, you think about the CIT training, you think about the fair and impartial policing, you think about the training process that we go through, all those things have contributed to making our community safer. And I think that a lot of that has to do with your leadership when we start to look at this several years ago. And I want to also thank Colonel Lewis because of his experience in the Marine Corps and how we can turn that switch, as he puts it, and how our policies need to look, and how we need to be more effective in what we do and focus on the sanctity of life. Because most officers get into the business to serve people, and no officer wants to take somebody's life. And I think that we've been very successful in giving our officers the tools so they don't have to. And then I think our recruitment efforts. Our recruitment efforts, you know, it really makes my heart feel good if you go on our website and you look at the video, the recruitment video. It focuses on the community policing process, the community process, and our connection to the community process. And, you know, I'm surprised when I talk to, you know, I talk to every police officer that we hire, and a lot of them mention that video and say, "That's the community that I want to be in, a community that cares about people." And I think, go back to that first slide of our culture, that cares about people, and I think that's helped us recruit officers who are more focused on the community than they are excitement. And, you know, we get two different kinds of people apply for police officer jobs, people that are looking for excitement and people that are looking for the service of the community. And I think our culture, I think the way that we do our recruitment process has been very effective in finding those folks who truly want to serve our community. And I think that the organizational culture is that community policing and cultural inclusiveness. I think all those things are extremely important when we talk about how we approach everyday situations. You know, our officers answered about 133,000 calls for service, and you think about all the contacts that they made, and to have 23 use of force after that, you know, even if it's one person, then typically it's two to three people that they're dealing with on a very regular basis. That's several hundred thousand people that we're dealing with every single day. And to have that many use of force is a testament to their dedication to the community. I can't say enough good things about them because, you know, I kind of get to say, "Well, we need to move in this direction," just like you all do, but the rank-and-file officers are the ones that really have put the effort into this program, and it really does show. It really shows that they are committed to making our community better. And I think that we've been very successful, whether we're using the front porch roll calls, whether we're going out and doing coffee with the chief or coffee with the cop, all those programs that we're going out and talking to the community and engaging people, I think has been extremely successful because we've heard from them that they are concerned about officers using force. They are concerned about an officer stopping them in the middle of the night. And being able to calm those fears, talk about what we're doing to try to alleviate them has been very, very beneficial, I think, for us, and very beneficial for them as So what comes next? Tomorrow, we have the Veer Institute and Police Executive Research Forum. Both of those are think tanks, for national think tanks, and they're going to come in and they're going to evaluate our process. They're going to do it for two reasons. One, they're going to make suggestions. They're going to talk about how we can more effectively train our officers, how we can look at our policies. But they're also going to take back to other communities our successes. They want to know what makes us successful. They want to know why we've seen this significant use of force problem. They want to know what things we're doing and how we They want to know what things we're doing and how we can, how, how that can translate into changing the training process nationally for, for, for use of force training. So, so we're excited about them coming, we're excited about, about what they're going to talk to us about, but we're also excited that, that Jacksonville's being recognized for the efforts that we've made to make our community a, a better place to live.
How does that differ from the police accreditation routine?
The police accreditation routine takes a number of standards, and they look at those standards, and they apply those standards to what we're doing right now. This process, what they're going to be-
No, go ahead, I'm listening.
Oh, this process, what, what they're going to be doing is they're going to be looking at actually what we do for training. They're going to be interviewing the officers. One of the things that I think that's going to be very helpful for us is they're going to talk to the officers about what their concepts are of this training process and how they, how they, the officers themselves, see what we're doing and what the, the goals of the program are. And then they're going to come back and say, "Here's some, some practical suggestions on how we think that you should focus your training efforts." It may be more simulation training, it may be more hands-on training on the range, it may be more CIT training, it may be a, a host of different things. So this process is, is not really an accreditation because we're not comparing it to standards because really, this is, this is, this is outside the box. You know, there's not a lot of communities across the country that have focused on de-escalation, that have changed their policy to focus on the sanctity of life. But the, the people from the, from PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum, will tell you that, that people that focus on, on sanctity of life have seen some significant decreases in, in use of force incidents. So they're going to, they're doing this at about 50 or 60 agencies across the country, and, and we feel honored that they're, they're coming here to look at our processes. And I think, I think we're going to, we're going to see how we can move our training and move our, our processes, move our policy to that next level.
Is this a nonprofit group, something?
This is actually a, a grant that the-
Justice Department?
Yeah. They, they got a grant, the Veer Institute has got a grant, they partnered with Police Executive Research Forum, and it's part of that ICAT training that I talked about. But it's also part of looking at policies, it's also looking at, at processes. There'll be, there'll be somebody that's an expert in, in police use of force, there'll be somebody that's an expert in, in the mental health process. And so those folks will be talking to us about what they see and what they, what they see we can do better. So, so we're excited about, about this process and where it's going to take us. And I think it dovetails with our crisis center opening up and the mapping that we're doing. So I think all those things together are going to have a tremendous impact on, on folks in our community.
Very good, Chris. Thank you, that's good news.
I was just going to say one thing. We've all heard of post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, our military coming from war zones. Today, the chief shared a statistic with me and with Gail, we were standing talking. If a police officer has to take a gun and shoots an injured offender or kills an offender, that 80% of those police officers end up with some type of symptom of PTSD. So if you look at it that way, we're actually benefiting our officers by, you know, equipping them-
And their family.
And their families. Again, from that, I just thought that was an important point.
That is a good point.
Mayor and council certainly appreciate the chief's presentation. As he said, Colonel Lewis has played an active part in this. I'd like to give him the opportunity. I know he came prepared for the 30-minute speech.
Before, before we started, he said, he said he wasn't going to say anything, but-
I just, I came, I came in as support mode, but when the chief was talking about ICAT, that's the integration of communications, assessment, and training. I don't know if you all kind of remember that. So, so what we've done is just taken that model and just inserted pieces so that it is integrated, so that the mindset of the individual officer is changed from the, the old times when the mayor was there, "You go settle the situation." Now, we're saying, "Go settle the situation, but before you get there, here's some things to think about. And oh, by the way, there are some certain instances that people have certain issues that they're dealing with. You now have to change to see what that, what's going on, measure that, and, and consider always that sanctity of life." So, so, so it's sort of like a mindset change. But we, but if you think about it, you, you turn it on with a 911 call, and they're blasting to it. And then we're asking them to kind of slow up at a point to assess it before you go settle what it is. So it's, it's really a, a change in the mindset.
Positive change.
And, 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 and I think those things that the chief outlined, that we've kind of inserted in from training and, and, and everything that he outlined, it, it is, we're showing positive results of that.
Chief, would it be good to maybe tell council while you're here, the mapping and what that is and what we're doing?
Yes, the mapping program, and that'll be on May the 9th, they'll actually, they're actually going to do a report to council on May the 9th. So our mapping project is through, through task, Treatment Alternatives for Saved Communities. And what they're looking for is, when the crisis center opens, when that person comes out that back door, what kinds of services are going to be available? How long does it take to get to those services? So we got, we're getting the crisis center open, that the mapping services is that next step. How do we get them into treatment after they get out of the crisis center? Where do they get that treatment? How long does it take? And where are those gaps in those services so that we can start to work on those? So I'm, I'm actually excited about that because I think that's, that's the second piece of our crisis center. The crisis center is a great start, and it's going to provide a lot of good services. But the mapping is also going to give us what we need to do as a community and what we need to do as, as a, as a profession to make sure that we're getting quality service to these folks and so that officers don't have to use force. You know, whether they're homeless, whether they've engaged in opioid, I think I shared with you, we had three, three overdoses on Saturday that were related to opioids. So officers and firefighters had to give Narcan three times on Saturday. So that, that crisis still, still plagues us, but I think once the crisis center opens, once we get that mapping system in, it's going to be tremendous when we talk about those folks that are, that are suffering from substance abuse and mental health right now.
Now, while we're talking about the crisis center, as we know, we had a ribbon cutting several weeks ago. Certainly commend Councilmember Thomas, Councilmember Lozera, and all the council, but these are the two who served on your task force with the county and with others. But Mike also mentioned what's going to happen next week with the Attorney General.
Yeah, the Attorney General's coming on April the 9th, he'll be here at 10, 10:30, and he'll be, he'll be talking about asking questions of us as to what we have done to open that crisis center. Because this is a very unique in the state. In fact, he, he often mentions it when he talks about, about the opioid crisis. So he's excited to come, he's, he's very interested in, in how we did it and why we did it this particular way. And so he's just coming to listen about, about how we did things. So we're excited to have him here.
Any other questions for Mike or the Colonel?
Great presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. Good, good.
I have a couple of One City moments we'd like to conclude on, if that's acceptable. I'm not sure whether I have to run this over to Glenn. So let's see. The pet parade. Now, this kind of speaks for itself. This was the first pet parade that the Recreation Department has sponsored. As you can see, a lot of people came out, a lot of four-legged friends came with them, and we had a great time. Now, this is actually a miniature Chihuahua standing next to a very small person. And the rumor that, that Mr. Warden's grandsons dress these dogs is strictly a rumor. We also had, of course, the police canons out. And then United Way recognition. We're very fortunate that Pam Trafman received the Award of Excellence on behalf of the city for our participation. United Way is obviously a very important component of every community and makes a difference here in this community. Now, flipping Jacksonville. Many of you probably do what I do in the evenings, and that is watch HGTV or wherever those initials are. So recently, we decided that it was time for us to do some flipping of our own. We have the Country Club Villas, also known as Myrtle Woods, through community development efforts, we purchased several units over there that we're rehabbing. And this past week, a number of city employees, there's a couple of mills, number of city employees came together on Friday afternoon. They gutted one of the apartments so that it can be completely refurbished. You can see some of our brute force that it took, a lot of sweat equity went into that. At the end of the day, out of that one unit, in order to completely gut it of everything, you can see the pile. And by about 10 o'clock Saturday morning, Cary Terrell's personnel had completely picked all of this up. There's the overall team that was out there, all good city leaders.
That's great stuff.
Next thing we'd like to talk about is River Walton Marina. You may have gone by the marina this past week, but I bet it didn't look like this. At the end of the day today, that pile is now gone. So you're going to have some beautiful views there at the waterfront. The marina itself is getting closer and closer. I won't give an opening date because every time I do, something happens and it gets delayed, but it's very close to being finished. I also like to remind people that the census is coming up. It actually will be occurring this time, one year away. It's important for everybody to participate in the census. We had a census kickoff nationwide yesterday where a number of people came together with a complete count committee. Glenn has done an excellent job in, in leading that effort. Also, I'd like to close with, with one other item. Last week, there was a news article that has, I think, gotten some misinterpretation regarding the city sponsoring a $20 million sports complex. The capital improvement program of the city does not contain that item. It was an information item that talked about goals and future. It did not mean to give the impression that the city council had voted and that we were in fact going to be building that complex. If in the future it's built, it most likely will be a joint venture between the sports commissions, the TDAs, the county commission, and the city. But we received several calls that the city's saying, "When are you going to open it? Where are you going to build it?" It's just one of those guys, people. That is a dream that someday will be fulfilled, but it is not something, as we faced the budget challenges that we discussed earlier today, that is on our table for the next year or maybe even much, much longer. With that, Mayor and Council, we appreciate everything you all do, your patience tonight, and we look forward to getting guidance from you at the next meeting. Thank you. Counsel Andy Collins.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All the members.
opposed.